Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order tonight. This is a Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, April 25th, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Planning Board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties who are required to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person or may attend remotely by following the instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, a long agenda. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20F, after notifying the Chair of the Public Body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And per Section 241-1 of the Town Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at a time before the board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponent of an item is permitted to pass. So we are recording this evening. We do have folks on Zoom this evening. Is anybody else recording? No, no one else is recording. Okay, so we'll get underway then. So do we have any formates last minute? No, okay, move on to the minutes set of April 11th. We have a motion to approve of the amended. Thank you, Jonathan. And a second by Malcolm. Do I need to write that down?
No.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Let's see. Sorry, folks, let's see, who's in the audience today? I don't see, are they on line? Is anyone here representing 20 Castle Street? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Elm Court. Okay, so item number four on our agenda is a review and recommendation to the Select Board on the proposed alteration of the layout of Elm Court, a public way. Mr. Arianti, did you want to tee that up or Chris, did you want to? Okay, great.
So, as I said in my notes to the board, as you know, the ZDA issued a special permit for the alterations to the property at night Elm Court, which includes using a portion of what is currently town property known as Elm Court. And that includes removal of a portion of that sidewalk. Currently, that area is under a license agreement with the town, but that license agreement could be revoked at any time. And so for obvious reasons, the DuBois Center is seeking some permanence to the use of that area. That permanence would actually be controlling and owning that portion of the property. In order to do that, in order to create that parcel and take it out of what is currently within a town way, the following procedure has to be followed. Planning Board would review tonight and vote to recommend the alteration of the public way. The Select Board would review and vote to alter the public way, and that's scheduled for Monday night. Town meeting would then vote to alter the public way and authorize the Select Board to transfer that land. And so that's scheduled for the warrant for the town meeting of the 6th. Then, the Form A can be created, which would take that portion of land and make a parcel that can be then transferred to the DuBois Center. So I did send a suggested motion to you. That's a quick summary of the issue. So again, looking for a recommendation to the Select Board and Town Meeting.
And for the benefit of the Board and the members of the public that are here, are you able to share on screen the survey plan that was provided that shows the portion
Yep, it will just take me a second.
While Chris is bringing that up, Jeremy, do you have any questions about this?
I don't, but I'm interested where Jonathan's at.
Can you speak up?
No, but I'm interested where Jonathan's at. We did have a lot of discussion about this.
Jack, I'm still recused.
You're still recused, okay. That's great. Malcolm?
Who?
No questions? Jonathan, do you have anything that you want to share?
Yes. Nick, how many parking spaces are you providing?
Can we? Can we? Why are you raising parking spaces?
Just my top?
Yes, of course, but.
It's a bona fide question.
Well, nothing's changed as far as the plan on this side of the property that was presented before, there's zero parking spaces.
Zero parking spaces, so how do people get there?
Again, nothing has changed since what was presented the first time as far as traffic, as far as access to the site. It's to be a walking venue accessed by walking from whatever neighborhood in town. Obviously, there's no space on the site triggered by a parking. And we're not obligated to run the bylaw on this.
I understand, I understand. And you're proposing something that's going to be basically about, I forget what the term is, a national heritage site, something similar to that.
Right.
That's going to be a magnet to attract tourists
Yep.
from all over?
Right. Yeah, it's not different.
Okay.
For example, to a site that would have a similar character
Okay.
in an urban area that is of particular historical importance.
So those people are going to be walking from remote parking spaces all over town, presumably. And we're taking away a sidewalk? Point of order here. We've already, I mean, I thought the sidewalk was already agreed to. Is the special permit already granted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the sidewalk's not an issue. Some questions? We're going to town meeting and the town has to vote out to give it away, alright? I think the ZDA saw when license, it reads a license. It doesn't matter, it has to. The sidewalk's, the sidewalk doesn't have to. Has to. Alright.
Wow.
I knew that the board.
Jonathan, Mr. Gant, wow.
I knew that the board votes to approve and recommend the alteration of the town way known as Elm Court by removing from the layout of such way a portion thereof abutting the property known and numbered as Line Elm Court, being lot two, as shown on a plan entitled Proposed License Area Plan Prepared for Clinton Church Restoration, Inc., Line Elm Court, Great Barrington, Mass., prepared by Forsight Land Services, dated July 14, 2023. A second.
Alright.
Yes.
We do have a quorum, yes.
Yeah, seven?
We have seven, we have five members. Yes. So there is a quorum for the record. Do we have any discussion?
Well, I mean, I think for what recommending, I mean, I think what Jonathan was talking about, I don't know if it was out of order because we still have to, the town still has to convey this property, which is currently a sidewalk.
But the sidewalk is already decided.
No, no, I get.
I mean, so the town meeting is not deciding the sidewalk. The town meeting is only deciding whether to convey the property to the Clinton Church so that they can have their property without fear of it being taken away.
Sure.
Well, that's. Is that exactly correct?
But it's, but it's their property which would include, isn't including the sidewalk?
There is.
The issue of whether the sidewalk will be removed or not is already.
The ZDA decides.
This is merely, will the town alter what is a public way?
And convey.
So that that portion of the public way can be conveyed so that the DuBois Center can control it in perpetuity.
I get it.
That's all.
I get it, but, okay.
So should they continue to have to have this licensing over their head? Or should we recommend to the Select Board and the Town Meeting?
I get it. I mean, I, I think they shouldn't have it over their head and that the town should convey that, but I think you're still going to get the same question because the piece of property has a sidewalk and the town manager could revoke the license tomorrow, right?
Yeah, well, we could wait six months before they, and they tear up the sidewalk and then we could have it.
But.
I mean, the sidewalk's cool.
But until, but until the sidewalk's literally.
So.
I mean, I get it.
But, but let's move past the sidewalk now because a sidewalk is a piece of infrastructure that, yes, we paid for as town testers, but trust me, we've paid for other things that have gotten ripped up and replaced.
I get it.
Right?
I mean, I just.
So wait, let's, let's understand what remains, right? So Chris, this is why I wanted you to bring this up. So what is outlined in yellow is a portion of the existing way to be potentially conveyed to DuBois Center.
Correct.
And the remaining way is, can you like roughly trace it with the cursor just so that we see? Because I think there's potentially some misunderstanding about what the way is. I mean, you've been down there, Jeremy. It's essentially a driveway, right? And it's not technically a through way over to Rossiter.
But you can get through it with a car. I drove both ways.
Via private, yeah. Private property.
And I realize that.
Yeah.
And I mean, I don't think, I'm of the opinion that the sidewalk's not usable. And so that it's not there anymore. I don't have a problem with it, but I think we're still going to get, even though that's not the question, I mean, I think you're going to get the question.
The drivable width. But that's what we're deciding today.
The drivable width of the road.
Will not change.
Remain as it currently is. It will not change.
And I get how it's not a street because it's terrible. It's really hard to drive. But I mean, you're going to get that Jonathan's going to bring it up at Town Meeting.
No, let him bring it up. Because that's all, I mean, I just say here.
But I, so I think.
But, but the issue is not the site plan itself. The issue is the conveyance of land.
I got it.
And whether or not there can be movement via vehicles, bicycles, scooters, ponies, I don't know, anything down the way, the way will still remain and it will still have a width to it. It could be improved other ways. It could be turned into a pedestrian plaza at some point. I mean, we can make that recommendation, but.
And whether we vote yes or no, and whether the town meeting votes yes or no, it's still going to, the sidewalk is going to be gone.
Unless.
No, no unless. It's already been approved to tear up the sidewalk.
But until that happens, can't the town revoke the licensing?
It may, if the town wants to, but I don't think, I don't see the town, why the town would want to.
I don't.
I mean, that's not coming up for a vote in Town Meeting.
No, I don't. What is the, I mean. So.
What's your concern?
I don't know. I mean, I think, so my concern is, I just think we should be clear about it, even though that's not the thing. I mean, I think, clear about the sidewalk.
It's very clear.
Okay.
Why are we not clear?
And, and sure.
Well, I know the ZDA is clear, but it like, at least as a.
We are not voting here to tear up the sidewalk.
Right.
We're voting here to convey property.
It's very, it's very compartmentalized. It's very compartmentalized.
I mean, I think it's a sidewalk that goes nowhere and I don't see any way that we can make the sidewalk bigger except to turn the whole thing not into a driving way. And then you don't even need it. And so. Why? And I get Jonathan's point, but I don't think anyone's going to walk to the site from there except for people that have maybe live on East Rossiter Street. Everyone's going to approach it from the bank parking lot cutting through or they're going to approach it from the existing sidewalk that's going to stay. And so. So I think it's a non-doing, but I, I, I mean, I get what he's saying, but I wish he was here.
We can't help that. Alright, so we have a motion and a second and if any more questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Free zero.
Do you want to go back?
Zach, are you ready? Okay, cool. So we'll go back to item number three, special permit, public hearing for 20 Castle Street.
So, Brandy, before you start.
There's more.
So you apparently only have three members at.
Yes, and.
The vote requires concurrent vote of four of the five members.
Yeah.
It is not legally passable, possible anymore to elevate the associate member.
Let's go, why not?
It is not. That's been case loss last year. Remember we wrote a letter?
We had to elevate her when?
We're going to only elevate the associate of the forum.
It's not a forum, that's why.
What if we could get Peter to participate around?
So, your options are to begin the public hearing. You could even hear all the evidence and if you get to a point where you close the public hearing, you could even do that. But you cannot vote. You can vote at a later date after your two absent members can review the video and all the evidence certify that they've done so and then.
What do you want to do?
They can take the vote. Is that clear?
Do you want to present tonight or do you want to postpone? We're perfectly happy to have you present tonight. Okay, alright. Thank you for clarifying procedure, Chris. Alright, so we can vote to open the public hearing. So do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move second.
Thank you. This is going to be easy, who's moving in second thing, I think?
Yeah, all votes in public hearings are welcome.
Okay, Jeremy, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Malcolm, and I'll vote aye as well. So go ahead, Zach, if you'd like to make a presentation, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Zach Holbreth, I'm American living. Name's Payne, Castle Street LLC. Castle Street Firehouse LLC. And on behalf of my clients, we are here, or I am here to request permission to uplight the reconstituted host tower. I have marked on that print of the presentation file that you guys are watching now on your desk, the site plan as inherited from Forsight hearing. Survey markers, proposed landscape plan that shows the location of the lighting on the host tower as well as the downlighting that will be going on the west elevation along the reconstituted landscape walkway that connects to the main. Castle Street back around to the top of Railroad Street. And elevations, also demarcating the location of exterior lighting as well as the historically approved demonstration package and masonry repair work that's been largely completed.
It looks great. So could you, since this is specifically around lighting, could you please focus in on A201 and help us match your lighting cut sheets to your plan? I didn't, I don't know if I wasn't following, I was scrolling back through a lot of PDFs.
So the uplights that we're proposing on the host tower are the W6 fixtures.
So, wait a minute. So this one is marked as W6?
Yeah.
Yeah, marking.
And so, which I think is your W7. It's like a little blood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Clutch me up on that one.
Yeah.
So, for the record, there is a lighting cut sheet in our packet that is labeled picture type W6 fixture.
Yeah.
Flood, flood pro, WPL335. That's actually the W7. I think it's the very first page of the packet of cut sheets. Sorry, I don't know what PDF page it is. So that, okay, so that.
So the W7s will be downward facing on the.
Yeah, you can see those drawing through A201, kind of a corner of the building.
Yeah.
And then there's another one.
On the rear corner.
Yeah.
And then one in between Mahawi and, or two in between Mahawi and, sorry?
I'm hopefully not passing.
And your bottom, right?
Yep. There's one at the alley entrance.
Yeah.
One at the, kind of the north side of the 80s edition. And then there's, which is also indicated on number two, west elevation, kind of elevation. And then there's one kind of on the west corner of that edition as well.
So which of the W6 then?
Yeah, the W6 is the.
Was spilling. Labelled as W5.
W5, which is the two architectural.
Should check.
The X.
What's W5?
Yes.
And that's the uplight.
W5 on one diagonal, W6 on the other.
So.
I mean, on the, on the south elevation, it shows a W5 on the drawing.
Ah.
It says a W6 on the west elevation.
Yes.
But what you're saying is.
Don't look at the numbers.
Don't look at them.
So the one.
The shapes.
This one here.
Along with being a visual painter.
This is, this is what's going to be upward.
Yes, that's right.
The rest of them are all down.
All the rest of the lighting is downlighting, yes.
So, okay. So really, the main reason you're here is because your W7's not fully shielded and your tower lighting is uplighting.
That's right.
And so, tell us why you can't comply with the design standards?
Because the alternative for lighting the substantial masonry investment in building would result in essentially ears, lighting ears that would hang out over the parapet. And that wasn't architecturally acceptable to the client.
I still don't understand why you can't just do downlighting.
Up from where?
From a little higher up on your tower? I really, I truly do not understand, like architecturally, why it can't just be downlighted.
The feature that we're trying to uplight are the, the arches that are reconstituted in the host tower. And downlighting that would result in shadows instead of highlights, which is.
And just to clarify for the board, I think, if you don't remember, the very top of that host tower didn't exist for many years, which just recently rebuilt with the masonry arches. I think that's what's favored for.
So Brandy, you can see how the sun is making shadows in those right now?
I can, I'm very familiar with this. Yes, I'm just trying to understand why we should grant a special permit for it when we were specifically trying to reduce overlighting and when the downtown is really overlit to start with. I hate to just say it's overlit, so just throw it out and who cares? Let's just light everything. Like, then we look like Las Vegas at some place.
When do the lights go on?
When, how are they controlled? That is a good question.
They would be on timers. And that's something that I was going to discuss with the board. We discussed having there be, I think, an alarm clock, 11:00 PM limiter at the Select Board hearing. That was also, I believe that was read into the record as the recommendation.
We didn't see that in the packet, so that's why we're asking.
And which lights would all bond for, or stay on for safety?
Well, the, the floodlights, the mislabeled W7s, that Brandy pointed out, aren't kind of completely shrouded. Those would be on motion centers, so those would be kind of essentially safety lights. The downlights on the western elevation, I think, would also be on the timer, the local building not lit up all night.
You think or you know?
There haven't been specific specifications written into.
I mean, that's. We're looking for your proposal for style and control of lighting because that's what we're going to vote on. So we like to know what you want in terms of style and control and then we like to look at standard that we've established. And then we'd like to understand what the special circumstances are if we're going to grant a special permit on it, but, you know, so we would be looking to the owner to provide, you know, what their hours of operation are or why they want a certain number of hours.
The downlighting on the western elevation is to provide kind of a lit passageway for that zone of town.
I don't think there's a question about the downlighting. I think we're fine with the downlighting.
Well, just in terms of what it, terms of timing. Style and operational component, there'd be no intention of having it lit all night. I haven't discussed with the owner exactly when that cutoff is going to be, but the outside lighting, that's not the safety lighting floodlights, will be on timer.
It should be on the timer, 11 to 5, it should be dark by the bylaw. So if you want it to go dark before that or after that, that's fine, but those are the hours, it should be dark.
Is that doable, do you think? So I think the corner floodlights are the easier ones. So why can't we find a shielded fixture for that? There are shielded floods commercially available at Home Depot, frankly. So if it's.
We honestly just didn't look for shielded floods because we thought it was more of safety concern than a night sky concern.
I think there's a couple of pole mounted lights back in there too, though, right?
Well, there's also a series of not completely shielded overhead lights along that whole alley.
So can you do a shielded, there are shielded floodlights. Can you just go with a shielded floodlight?
We can change that, sure.
And then in terms of hours of operation, 11:00 PM to 5, is that seven days a week? I don't have that up on my screen. Are you looking for hours outside of that? No, I'm just asking Zach, are you looking for hours outside of that?
Well, I guess the question should be asked whether or not there would be options to have the lights on longer in case of special events such as the gala or other events where there would be requests to have additional lighting.
So the bylaw, the bylaw says the lights can be dimmed to 50% or less luminance except for lights at emergency facilities. Motion sensors and photo cells may be utilized to turn on lights or to increase lighting to full luminance. But if you're looking for, I think if you're looking for just the right to have the lights on after 11, then you need another special permit for that because that's, that's the bylaw. So if 50% illumination after, after 11 and your motion sensors, it would be okay, then that works.
That's easy enough. All these fixtures are dimmable.
Alright, so then we're back to our two architectural lights, which are desired for the purpose of illuminating brickwork features on the tower.
So it, it looks like you've designed or selected this light so it doesn't shine up into the sky, it just shines up into the, up to the part of the tower that angles out, is that?
The fixture that we'd be specking is the one that has, that angles out or angles in toward the facade.
So in terms of this cut sheet, just to be clear, can you tell us specifically which model you're proposing to use?
We'll be selecting the one side each for twenty seven hundred.
One side each, so F down at the bottom.
No. Twenty second C. The top. Orientation would be toward the building. The bottom orientation would be toward the, um, the landscape.
Which, I'm sorry, which?
So it's in the bottom row.
So the one that.
Second row. Yeah, exactly.
It's like a combination of the F away from the wall and F towards the wall, right?
Yeah.
Oh.
Um.
And towards the wall is the. Pointing up. And the wave from the wall is pointing down.
Is that right?
It's a great, yes.
Well, since you're going to have to come back anyway. Um, could you, um, provide us a detail of? If you could contact WAC. And ask them, what is the cast of that one up and like, how far out does it spread? Or is the bulb angle to go against the building? Like, that's what we can't tell. It's like, where does it finally cut off? And then if you could show us that in relationship to how far out the brick molding protrudes, so that we can. Gauge whether or not the light is moving beyond that brick molding. Do you think that could inform the decision making? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I can almost guarantee that there's going to be still over.
Yeah.
I think.
Just the way light works.
To understand that would be good. Like, how much are we losing? Fifty percent of it? Are we losing ten percent of it? Does that?
Well, it's just also it's got to change when they set it up and how, whether. You'll only really know when it's put in place and you see where it's going. And what looks, makes sense.
Yeah, because this doesn't look like it's adjustable. Like, you could tilt it in a little bit more so that it dies out into the brick face, right?
Can you do a test? I'm sorry, just can you do a test just by freezing so she can?
We want to get to order a fixture, install it.
See if we all like it.
See, Chris, we want to have this for now on, like everything, decision that we make. Like, we want to see it after.
So twenty seven hundred on, on your college, that's fine for you guys. Is that right? And then if you just want to confirm the hours, um, or you can meet the full requirements for the hours. What else does anybody need for information? That good? All right. So I don't believe we can take any further action, right? We can continue the hearing.
We can take a public comment.
Oh, yes, that's right. Yeah, I'm so sorry, everyone. Okay, so any more questions on board? Hearing, no questions from the board. Um, do we have comments and questions from the public? Um, sure. Um, Mr. Schnell?
I think that's, uh, sorry, it's related to the next presentation.
Oh, wait, that. I'm going to move the panelists to present for our.
Uh, okay.
Are we sure?
Yes.
Mr. Schnell, did you have a comment about, um, the Catholic Street Building?
No, I did not. I'm, my apologies.
We'll put you back on here. Okay.
I'll have one time.
Yeah.
Why a fixture in the wall?
Sorry, who's speaking? Did you, uh?
Could you just for our record, please?
And.
And, and your comment again?
The, you can make mockup. You can make sure that the light does.
That would. For our ordering fixture.
That's true.
I wouldn't just.
It, I, I appreciate that. Thank you for the suggestion. Um, any other comment? All right. Um, are there reports from other boards on this? See, we already had a notice from the historic district commission that they. Bruges, this was.
I don't have it in front of me for this record.
Okay. That's a new record.
Well, I'm sorry, I can't ask.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no reports from other boards?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The select word. Uh.
Let's see. The select board offers the following comments regarding the special permit. Uh, any lights installed should be equipped with timers enabling them to turn on and off automatically if predetermined intervals. Times. And the planning board should discuss the suitable hours for the lights to be on. Conservation Commission says they have no jurisdictional interest or concerns. And I had a letter from the Board of Health. Also. Which states. Uh, the board discussed the impact of the upward facing lights on bird migration and ecological health. The board would like to recommend that the planning board impose a timeline on the length of the nighttime illumination. Shutting, uh, the upward facing lights shutting off at around ten or eleven P M.
Okay.
No reports from staff.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um. So I don't think we'll discuss findings. Yet. We'll take more information again, we can.
So shall we?
We would need a motion to continue to a future meeting.
A specific meeting in time, right?
So.
Anytime certain, uh, most likely. So your next meeting is the ninth, which is night number two of town meeting, if needed. So we're not looking to schedule any night. We can avoid it. So your next meeting, meeting of second.
Twenty third.
The third of the. Unless you want to set a special meeting.
I'll bring it to my calendar.
Yeah.
Um, it's definitely.
It's, is waiting till the twenty third problematic for you?
Uh, I mean.
Okay, so there's not an urgent reason to schedule a special meeting?
I mean, we want to get a decision that. Can, so we can order the.
Okay. I anticipate we'll make a decision on the twenty third. Okay, so what, um, do you want to make a motion to?
Yeah, we're going to continue the public hearing until, um, May twenty third at, um, six P M.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you for the discussion on that. Okay, on favor.
Hi, we need to do.
Jeremy.
Hi.
Welcome, Brandy.
Hi.
Thank you.
The number.
Yeah.
All right. It happens.
It would be helpful if you could resubmit the, yeah, drawing of the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll mark with the.
Okay, great. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I do. These are for the next application. Okay. All right, I think we're ready this time for second interview for nine hours. Sorry, Nick, for the mix up.
We don't have.
Sure, small ones in our. Heather.
Right, well, good, and, again. We are returned, um, for the hour thirteen. Hearing, where the planning board has had a ten review, uh, Vicari ente, council on behalf of the African. DuBois Freedom Center and here with, uh, Nai Wedeker, the executive director. Um, so, so, uh, project manager and Jacob Beck of, uh, Beck, uh. Blackman Beck and, uh, Flan, oh, Parkman Beck and Steve Mack. Of course, I have any services. And then we also have Chuck Schnell of Walter Kudno Hufsky. Landscape. Associates.
Okay.
Um, with online. Uh, anyway, that's everyone's, more or less a full team. I just wanted to quickly make a few points since we last were here. Um. We have made a couple of amendments, uh, to the plan. The plans that were submitted, first of all, um, once we submitted the advice. We're calling belt free lighting plan revision. Um, if you recall, we had made a little bit of deviation initially, which was, uh, not redemnantly perceived. I request, but I think denied. We have, uh, uh. So on the point of February, that plan was revised along with letters of support. Uh, to the planning board or to the, to the, actually just to the town board. Um, and that was a proposal to, uh, zero up lighting of, uh, belt free, it's all internal. Uh, lit up, so it will be more blow as well. Um, so no more, uh, lighting issue, no request for any deviation that required your. Uh, specific approval. Uh, there was also a, uh, we had. Submitted, uh, formally some renderings on the twenty ninth of February, which were presented at the select board hearing. Uh, which were helpful to convey, um, uh, to the select board specifically. But the plans were, uh, on the ground and so those were submitted as well. And, um, today, earlier today, we did submit. Uh. Planting plan as well, planning elevations and sections that were prepared by, uh, Walter Kudno Hufsky, that we will review here in just a few minutes. Um, the other points I just wanted to make before I, uh, hand off the presentation of the. Planting plan and elevations to Chuck Schnell are that, um, we. Have been in the select board. Uh, the select board did, uh, recommend. Uh, favorable approval and support of the special permit application of the Zone Board of Appeals. Uh, Zone Board of Appeals, um, considered and granted unanimously, special permit application, as presented. Um, with modifications that I just referenced here. Uh, we've, uh, passed the appeal period. We have a good special permit and, um. My client, uh, and I, on behalf of our organization, are very excited about that. And it's been a long time coming and a lot of work, uh, which they can all tell you. Uh, Eugenie and what the rest of the board have. But in countless hours' time, blood, sweat, tears, effort, all the above in. Uh, ensuring that this very worthwhile project is going to be settled. Um. The select board has signed, uh, the license agreement for the D F B. Will allow, do you sound like a time manager? That's right. Um, to allow, uh, the use that was permitted by the special permit to occur on the site as presented. Um, yeah, and it's, uh, comes to the public record. Um, thank, uh, we are open to address some of the, what we call open issues that were raised otherwise. In the first planning board hearing. And I think first and foremost of those issues was. Planting plan and, uh, concise explanation of what's being presented on the site and how it's incorporating and working to accomplish the objectives that we. Are, uh. Uh, gonna, you know. Envision on the site. So without any further talking by me. Uh, Chuck Schnell of Walter Kudno Hufsky is going to present the planting plan. He's on Zoom. You have a couple of large scale, uh, drawings over there, those may have by elevens.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just to clarify, you're no longer seeking a deviation on sessions six point four point six then, up lighting?
The up lighting, that's correct.
Okay, so there's no more deviation on the table?
No.
Okay.
Is that for you to, uh, hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I just wanted to check and make sure that, um, you can see me and you can hear me.
See you. We can hear you and there's a plan on the screen. So if you want to talk us through it, that'd be great.
So ju, uh, I'm, uh, Chuck Schnell. Landscape, uh, designer and planner. I work for Walter Kudno Hufsky Associates, landscape architects and planners. Uh, we've been the landscape architects on, on the, working on the design team for the DuBois Freedom Center. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to talk about, uh, the planting plan. And also when I'm, you know, uh, please feel free to ask questions, um, as I go along. I'm glad to add more detail as needed. So I think one of the, one of the things that I would, I guess, two things to highlight about the thinking that's gone into. Uh, what you see before you in terms of the planting plan. Is that we're reacting in large part to a. Um, but somewhat of a, it's a street. And large portions of this, well, large portions of the planting are, are best categorized as streetscape. Sort of scale planting. Uh, we're dealing in, we're, we're trying to take advantage of, of. Uh, the limited amount of space that we have, uh, around the building without sacrificing. Uh, what was, what I think was as, when it was the, uh, the Zion Church. That the front of the church. Uh, which is on the southeast side. Facing the, which would be facing, um, the Berkshire Bank parking lot. Had always been, had always been an area that, that was used for church gatherings. So, uh, that was. Uh, one, yep, thank you for circling that. One space that we were, we were honoring. So we're honoring a couple of layers of history here. Um, and also acknowledging, well, one of the most important layers of that history is, is the namesake of, you know, of, of this. Building, um, W E B DuBois. Um, as well as past use, um, by church, the church community, so. Um. And one of the other pieces was. Trying to honor, uh, the very strong ecological ethos, uh, that we find in W E B DuBois's writing, especially about. Uh, this part of the, uh, Who's a Tonic Valley, which. Which was his birthplace and also long considered, and probably still. It's considered a very important part of his formative years and, and also his later years. Uh, so what you will find on the planting list is you will find. Uh, several native species being utilized where we can. Um. And, uh, in both tree, shrub and, uh, perennials and, and ground covers. Uh, to, in the areas that we have, we have ability to do it, we're trying to create a matrix of, of. Largely native plants that will be blooming seasonally. So there is a spring bloom season and then there is a summer bloom season and then there will be, uh, although not quite as. Uh, robust as spring usually is, which most of us are used to, uh, having experienced New England spring. Um. Which is usually quite abundant with spring wildflowers, uh, but there is some fall interest as well. Uh, there are three trees proposed along the north side and as part of that licensing, uh, agreement. Uh, with the town. Um, if maybe Jacob could circle those for me. One, two, and three. Um. Having, having worked on the team that, that had done. The Great Barrington Main Street Reconstruction Project, the DOT project, which was done a few years ago. Uh, and working closely with the tree committee and also with, uh, local arborist, uh, Tom Eggersaw. Uh, to really, really study street trees. Um. And also the requirements needed to grow street trees. Uh, and so the trees that you see being, there are three options being offered for the, you know, being presented. Uh, for the clients to consider. Uh, two of those I, I've, will note that they are on the approved tree list that we can find, that you, you can find posted on the town's website by the Great Barrington. Great Barrington Tree Committee. And that includes the honey locust and the snow goose cherry. If folks wait long enough, they can actually go see the snow goose cherry in person blooming on Main Street in probably the next few weeks. The hornbeam is a na, also a native plant, carpinas carolina, carolinaiana. But this is a variety that's called Palisade, which has been developed by. The National Arboretum to be able to withstand and perform well in, in. An urban, more urban environment and a streetscape kind of environment. Another thing to note is that. Evergreen. Plants are being used strategically. Where the main entry will be off of Elm Court and leading down to the new entry, which is on the north, northeast corner. And also along the north side of the building, which will be dealing with some, some shaded conditions for a good part of the year. So providing interest, providing interest in some, some scale to, to the building. And then again, also some evergreens along that. Strip of land that's between Elm Court and the new entry court, which is on the north side of the building as well, where the stair and elevator tower is located. So scaling and year-round texture. And massings in strategic spots. The other, one of the other key design intentions here is to, in a way, frame. Well, one, not shut off views into or out of this entry courtyard space or really any, on any space on, on the property. Back to Elm Court because there's a historic connection with this building to this neighborhood. So that's really being kept in mind. And I do know that there's been concern raised about the change in elevation that occurs. On the north, mostly, most noticeably on the northwest corner of the building. Down into the entry court. And there's. I wouldn't say it's, it's. A complete hedge being proposed there, but there is, the density of planting is increased there and, and most plants in that location. Are three. You know, three, three feet in height, maybe up to, there's one or two feature shrubs that are. Will get up to, you know, five feet in height. So they will be a, they will serve as a noticeable. Barrier for, for folks. From getting into that, getting into that space and. Getting down the slope. So that's been taken into, into consideration. To go to speak to the, the other piece of that, there is. The stepping of the walls there is also an important piece so that we're not creating situations where folks are going to be walking where there's a fall that. You know, that's a potential fall that would be over, you know, a certain height that requires a guardrail. So other. There are other things to point out about this. Yep, go ahead. Nope, not at all.
This, this looks really good. Just in terms of the, the stone wall material, I am just having a hard time recalling. Did you specify that or was that in Steve's plans as a? Those are your.
Yeah, it may, it may have appeared on, yeah, it may, yeah, it may have appeared on both, but we're, we're imagining it's, it's, or we're, what we're, what's being. Recommended is, is that it's, it's going to be of locally sourced fieldstone-like character. So it's, it's going to have a. You get a little bit of a sense of it from, from what's on the elevations. Here, the, the elevation on the bottom left is the historic entrance and the historic entry into the church and the bell tower. That faces Elm Court, so that faces to the south. And there are plantings at the, there's a landing that, that's at the bottom of that existing. Stair that's remaining and then a gentle ramp that gets you back down to the sidewalk. There is some planting along the top of that wall that helps soften the wall, tie the building back in, into the street and the landscape. Off to the right. Of the bell tower is a proposed tree or one of the proposed trees. There would be another one close to that one, another one further back. Opposite the bell tower. And the images really are for showing mix of textures and colors of the plants that would be, you know, that, that we're envisioning. In certain parts of, certain parts of the plan.
Okay, that's helpful. And so just in terms of the walls that, that's still, is that design detail still being developed? Or are you going with the, the fieldstone? I'm just, I was just trying to get a sense of like, is it going to be board finished concrete and poured?
No, so what, yes. Yeah, what I would say is the, the renderings that, that are up on the screen right now are a really good representation of what. Of what, what we are recommending. In terms of materiality. So it's, it's natural stone. There may be a slightly, slightly more finished natural stone cap that goes on top of those walls. But they are, they are not meant to be. Sort of commercial, meant to be a commercial scale. Commercial scale and character. These are, these are, it's, it's country church character is what we're really going after.
Okay. And, and then the lawn wraps around the south side of the building is.
It, it, yeah, it does in order to. There's a second egress.
Yeah. And then what, what, in that southwest corner, what is the finish in that space? It looks like two different hatches to me, like a concrete hatch and a, and a lawn hatch.
You're speaking about the wall, the wall in the building?
No, the surface material finish in the southwest corner. The kind of mid-right, or excuse me, mid-left of the page there. Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's another piece of lawn. That's another small piece of lawn. Yep.
Does that want to be lawn for building circulation purposes? That just seems like a really tricky spot to maintain.
It's, it's in order to maintain access around the, around the building. And it is, that's southwest, so that'll get. That'll, that'll still get a fair amount of, that'll get a fair amount of sun in that location.
Isn't there, there's a tall building right next to it though, I think.
Oh, actually, the bill, that building sits to the front.
It does. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't have a, if they decide to p-gravel it instead of have grass there, I don't really care. Yeah.
I have a question about the strip, the old sidewalk. Maybe I recall this incorrectly, but I thought that the original plan had a, a sharp wall there. That went up to the fourth feet and then the purpose of planning there was really to keep people from. You know, going down from that wall down to the entry level, but this looks like it's a sloped, you have it sloped.
Yes.
Is that, is that a change?
So they don't need a railing.
Okay, the, the rendering out in, or the landscape elevation you see in front of you. I don't think shows the, the cut of the walkway.
Yeah, this, this guy here does and that does too.
Yeah, yeah. So what's on screen shows.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and this is one of the reasons that following the first planning board meeting. We heard some of the, obviously some of the criticism, but some of the difficulty in visualizing what is really being proposed to these.
This is a lot more attractive than what I envisioned.
Right, yeah. And so it helps to understand the scale and kind of the, the, as Chuck was describing, the ability to. Create some kind of a, a buffer is probably a better way to say it than a barrier, you know. There are a lot of reasons why we, was proposed, but why, what is proposed, what's hoped, but one of them is to create. And as much non-part scale as possible to soften the site, to soften kind of the identity of the site and the building. And in order to provide a scale that kind of honors that theory as well as the architecture, as well as the history. You know, this does that, it's able to offset some of the water flow and discharge. It is an impediment to, you know, anyone who would be in that area from just kind of right hopping down the wall, jumping down. All those kind of things.
Unless you're 10 years old.
My son might do that. But. This was what was envisioned and really these renderings were what helped to convey that, you know, theory a lot better. And the SLU court appreciated it, ZBI appreciated it, and there was a lot of feedback that, okay, we understand it better now.
Can I, do you have a question? I have a technical question for Steve. Steve, just in terms of, of drainage, so I know you had explained before. Kind of the belt and suspenders approach to drainage and that's part of the reason the building is being raised because of the high groundwater table and you've got extra basins in there. In terms of drainage that remains on the way, but is there a catch basin in there? On the road now that will remain, or are you anticipating road runoff might impact the curb? On the south side of the way, the north side of the property. Sorry, Chris, I'm trying to be clear about that.
Steve Mack from Bullseye Land Services. Right now, the water flows from west to east.
Yeah.
Down towards the building.
Right.
And we are proposing to, since the building's coming up, we're just going to create, right now it flows like a river.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah.
We're proposing to put a swale along the back of the building and put a catch basin in. I don't know if you can see that similar.
Yeah.
And then that'll help the existing situation.
Okay.
And then when that's innovated, it's going to continue to do what it does now, to go out onto the street and run down the curb to.
Yeah.
A catch basin, which is right.
Oh, that is a catch basin. Okay, I couldn't make that out on the landscape plan. Okay, all right. So you're not expecting it to impact the entry walkway into the, like, the start of the plaza, right? Because that rises up and then goes down again?
Right, there's a curve there. Dropping down and there is now and that curve will remain and then the water will be diverted to. Follow us existing path.
And then is there any drainage proposed behind the wall to connect into your drain system? Just to. There is, okay. Okay, great. Thank you. We went through 10.5 before, right? And if the lighting issue is resolved. And we only had landscape. I don't think we need to go through 10.5 again. Right? All right. Are there, I don't, from what I'm hearing, I don't hear that we need to impose any condition.
No, so I need to.
Including these latest landscape plans? Right? Yeah, okay. Motion to approve by Nasa and a second, but do you have any, any further discussion? Favor? Any pose? Okay, great. Thank you guys. Thank you. Yep, good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chuck. I appreciate all the, the thought and the detail.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Let's see. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, on to our next item. So next item is special permit and site plan review. For 232 Main Street with a recommendation of the zoning board of appeals on the special permit application. From AF Architecture on behalf of James Hendrick. Berkshire alterations of the non-conforming structure at 232 Main Street in Great Barrington in the Village Center Overlake District. Good evening. Do you want me to have people to move along in the hall? Thanks, Chris.
When you talk, talk in terms of, not here, there, you know, give us specific.
Cardinal directions. You want to introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, I'm good morning, I'm a, uh, basically a architecture, representing here, um, James Hendrick. Um, our project is the, uh, alterations to the, uh, three, four, two, three, the. Two, two, three, two, uh, Main Street, Great Barrington. And, um, we, eventually we need to be in front of the, uh, we're looking, we're seeking, uh, the special permit from ZBIA. Uh, because it's a exist, pre-existing non-conforming building. And we're altering exterior, introducing some windows. And, uh, rebuilding, rebuilding the wall, the front wall, the roof, well, the stairwell. And few other implications, but, um, basically that's, that's where we're here. The, I guess the advising, advising committee on, uh, ZBIA.
Did, did Chris explain what our normal process is? So, um, when there's a special permit recommendation from this board and a site plan review. Typically what we'll do is we'll run through the site plan review criteria, but we won't make a decision tonight on site plan review. Much like what just unfolded with the DuBois Center. In case as you're going through the process with the ZBIA, there are other site-related changes, you don't have to then come back to us for an amendment.
So you can't be issued a decision concurrently with the ZBIA?
You'll, you, you will have to come back to us once you get your official permit for the site plan review, but any changes they have. Made or, um, conditions they have imposed, we will then just incorporate into our site review. But if we're looking for additional information, we'll give you that feedback tonight.
Right, so this gives us a chance to address that next time. Yeah, alright, appreciate it. So, um, so existing building is the former Masonic Temple. Uh, it's a CMU, it's a concrete mystery unit construction, there's the brick veneer and a portion of the building, and the rest of the building is. Um, that is exposed, um, the building, the building has a, a interesting structure, this half of the building is below the grade and it's a basement. Kind of, um, not really walkout basement, but it's pretty open because there's a lot of windows. And then there's main level is, uh, about five feet above the upper street levels. Um, so we're introducing a couple, uh, changes to the building, um, that are. Uh, on this, um.
Why don't you point them out? So folks looking online will give us here later.
Okay.
So if you point them out, I can kind of.
Um, so. So on the east side of the building facing the main street, uh, the biggest change we're introducing is a larger window. That opens up the interior space, it's proportionate to the space inside, and have opens up the building to the, to the public on the exterior, on, on that side of the building. Um, additionally to the north of that, there's a stairwell. And currently the roof of the stairwell is, um, just where the brick veneer cups are. Uh, which is the current, the, the, the light break portion of the building is a brick veneer, darker gray is a stucco above. Um, so we're proposing to replace the existing roof, which is rotting away, um, from several decades of moisture failure. Uh, with a kind of a clear story, um, element that has a new framing and, uh, it's all flat now. Um, and, uh, there is, on the south side of the building, there's one window looking kind of at the bank and south Main Street. Um, proportionate to the rest of the buildings on the other side of the building, like sixteen by eight feet, roughly the size. So the whole goal is just to open up the interior space of, um, the main building because of the soil, it's where in the forest. Um, and, uh, and then just go through the building and repair, for example, there's a. Failing coping on the very, on the top of the stucco at the very top of the building. So we're going to replace it with a gray metal to match the stucco. Um, can reuse that accent and focuses on the brick veneer as a layer. And all the window heights that ties in and to the, uh, brick veneer, so the top of the windows correspond to the existing line of the top of the brick veneer. Uh, we're proposing to replace it flashing with a metal, new metal flashing. Um, and, um, there's few lights we're proposing, so you can see there's two lights on both sides of the window. And there's one at the, um, above the, uh, the front entrance. And those are full cut off down, downlights. Uh, in the package, there's a rendering that shows, uh, uh, the parabolic shape of, of the casting of the light, it's strictly downlight, two degrees, parabolic downlight. Um, on the east side of the building facing the parking lot, um, we're proposing to open up the entrance door. Um, and installing a new canopy that ties, that ties back into the building. But, uh, with also service, they had the light of the canopy with the surface of lighting texture as well, this would be some LED tape. Inside to illuminate the entrance. Um, and other than replacing all the windows and installing new, uh, gutter system to contain the runoff water from the roof. That's pretty much all we're doing, as far as the landscape, there's a landscape plan on the page. The next one.
Uh, next one?
Yeah. Big, yeah. So as you can see, the building is located right on the property line, and that's since the, uh, ZBIA provided. Uh, but we do have a ten foot, uh, twelve foot easement easement to the south of the building. Um, and that's currently is a driveway which will remain, honestly, um. And what we're proposing is the front lawn of the building right now is kind of one large amorphous shape, it's sort of sloping towards the, um. Um, the north. Um, so what we're proposing is kind of creating scale. Square, it's proportional to the facade of the building, that's going to be more private, um, and, um. Going to kind of move it to lawn finish to it, um, while the. You know, the rest of the property just goes into more of a kind of ground cover, shrubs, native plants. Um, and there's a couple of trees along the, what delineates the kind of more private portion from the public is the, uh, uh, concrete wall and, uh. Um, the kind of cement block, uh, just translucent cement block wall that's sort of, it's sort of see-through, it's not, has a special pattern to it, so it's. It's kind of alternating lights and shadow, um, pattern. Um, and, um, and that's basically contains a, a semi-private courtyard. Um, and, uh, actually it was interesting to hear Jackson talking about the, uh, different trees that we're proposing. There was a similar idea of like honey locusts along the, uh, the fence, and giving some shadow and screening out the, uh, parking. So that's pretty much the extent of the project.
Okay, um, can you tell us a little bit more about the, um, the brick wall for the courtyard? So just, I want to understand the materiality, you're not changing the exterior materiality of the building?
Oh, the building, no.
Stuck, so it'll remain stuck.
The top of the building remains a stucco, the bottom of the building remains currently existing brick.
Yeah.
Uh, we're not adding or taking anything away, other cutting the new openings, so like you can see.
Yeah.
This is north elevation, there's a full windows, the new windows on the north elevation, all other windows are actually existing openings. So, except for the clear story and the full windows along the north side, this is, this is the only additions we're doing to the building. Uh, and then the other elevation, you can see that there's a one south window.
Yeah.
And then there's a, the east elevation, it's large, uh, when to place in the street.
And then the materiality of the, of the courtyard wall, is, is that like a, like a gray CMU?
No, it's like, it's actually white, uh, it's white cement block, um, that has a kind of, I actually have it in the car.
All I can think of is like the, the gray ones that kind of look like a flower pattern that is popular.
Similar idea, but it's more contemporary design, it's a diagonal, uh, recessed diagonal plane.
Yeah, okay.
That casts a shadow and then you sort of repeat that, it's just like what my drawing shows.
Okay.
Um, and, um, and that's mounted on the concrete wall with some, you know, kind of any concrete structures or segments of it.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's, uh, just kind of create, it's, it's see-through, you can see through it, anything, the wind moves through it, the line goes through it, it's just, um.
Okay.
Do you have any light fixtures? A couple mockups. Yes, no, I, for a second, I had the, the three D model of the, uh, of the, the wall itself. And, um, yeah, so that's.
Okay.
I have a question about, um, I don't know if it's relevant for us to be asking this, but it's the weathering steel that you're using. I mean, I think it's beautiful, but does it drip and stain and how are you handling that?
I think it's kind of part of the look of it, um, uh, and, uh. You know, it will create probably pattern, I use it a lot, um, in the past and then actually have, have a few. Products of spaces where it's happens, you know, where, where the, the steel creates little strips. Um, I kind of like it because it's sort of, in some ways it's sort of similar to brick in its texture, you know, so it's has a sort of.
It's a beautiful.
Yeah, it's a beautiful material, it's very alive, and it doesn't, you know, rot away like a lot of other steel products, um, so.
But it can drip and stain.
It's, um, so with the, the fascia, um. The, the flashing above the brick, currently it's a copper, green copper flashing that's sort of failing in places and. We want to replace it, so it does element running around top of the brick. And then it also wraps around these windows because the, the window facing south and east is slightly protruding from the plane of the building. Like kind of framed by the metal element, that's all metal, and it's corten steel and, and the idea is there that creates a shadow. Additionally, because of the way the building plays with the south and southeastern light. We kind of wanted to create a bit of like a depth and a shadow to it as well, and then the window itself recessed in that space. Deeper in, so, um, like a, you mentioned, this is the plane of a brick, the plane of a frame is going to be out about here, and then the window would have pushed pervading.
There's some really nice subtlety going here.
So kind of working that. And then it's also corten steel is above the roof of the, uh, the clear story. Um, what's above the stock was just a painted steel, uh, element, uh, kind of keeping same function, but it's a gray.
It's kind of like your color.
Yeah.
Of the building.
Do you have any questions?
Um, I'd like to see the special lines with plants.
Yeah.
So maybe next time you could bring more specification with plants.
Plants, okay.
So.
Oh, I'm not for sure it's going to be like honey locusts along the street lines, um, I'll, I'll specify more of a shrub.
Yeah, I need to come better around, you know, it's putting a condition or something.
In, in terms of the site plan in general, um, where you've got exterior improvements, if you can specify those on the plant.
Okay.
So things like the, the path, um, materiality that's being selected there, you know, are those concrete or pay, you know, pavers or. Uh, bluestone or, you know, whatever they are. Um, and same with the trees, so we ask for species, size at planting, so caliber or gallon size. And, and then number of, uh, each species that's proposed.
Okay, so, so I'm just looking at the outline of the property that's owned, there's all that space in front of it between that and the sidewalk, you don't own that, but on the other side of your wall.
There is, the plan would work, um. There is a twelve foot easement, so the way the property worked, uh, was there was a much larger property and at some point. And this is how the non-conformity was created, is that, um, Masonic Temple Association sort of granted all the land south of them to the bank. And that those created the non-conformity before the rule about ten foot setback was in existence. And, uh, but they retain a twelve foot easement between, literally between the face of the building, twelve feet out. So right now, currently there is just kind of a gravel, um, like a splash zone. Uh, maybe about twenty feet inches wide, and then the rest of it's just asphalt for driving, so it's, it's a very, you know, easy throwing.
And in front of your courtyard?
Uh, so in front of my courtyard from a property, who, property, from a property line in, what we're proposing is going to be some sort of ground cover. That's would not encourage too much walking, but also would be kind of more lively in texture, you know, so there'd be some flowers, mixture of flowers and. Um, but currently there's like a lot of time there actually right now.
Yeah.
So they just kind of keep some of that. Um, and it just like, it's a lot of ground, which is for people to keep, 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 keep crisscrossing back and forth, and it doesn't really. Do anything to the building, so we're kind of, kind of separating the two functions, one is for like, creating more of a kind of gathering spot, and the other one is more just. Enclosure and, uh, um, you know, the privacy buffer and.
There's a kiosk, is that GB Trails kiosk, or something that, um.
I think the kiosk is actually on the banks.
It's the banks part of it.
I think so, do you know?
I think so, there's a indication, uh, there's a couple benches currently installed, um, on the, on the main street side. Um, and, um, it's actually kind of right behind our, our screen right now, so if you, if you scoot down a little bit with the drawing.
Isn't there a?
Or the other way, um, yeah, right, over too much, just a little bit, there you go, so, so right where we're proposing the path, uh, there's a sort of. Bit of a confusion there, there's a, there's a stump, a couple already installed benches, but there's a spot between the benches that sort of takes you right into the property and all.
So that's where the walkway is proposed to go, I see, okay, okay. Alright. Okay, well, I think it's cool you're bringing the building more up towards the street, so it feels always so.
Far away.
Far away, yeah, and why, why are we so, so far back?
Uh.
It's all that space.
Right.
And a more, it'll look like the front of the building now.
Mm-hmm.
Right, give it a sense of arrival.
That's right.
Uh, just out of curiosity, where is, there an easement for parking, shared parking with the?
There is, um, well, on the property itself, there is three parking spots right now.
Okay, oh, in the back then, yeah.
Yeah, in the back, and we not allow, we don't, uh. I would have created a fourth one, but I think that's a bit of a, you know, there's a light pole just outside of property line.
Yeah.
That we can't touch, so I think that kind of kills that, uh, fourth parking spot, so basically there's room for, you know, there's existing free use parking spots which we kind of maintain. And, uh, I don't think there's really, there's no room where we can provide more. And, you know, the use is not demanding it, and because we're non-conforming pre-existing, we're not required to apply the bylaws, so.
What about, um, handicap accessibility, if this is going to be like a commercial or?
It's not yet, it's, uh, right now we're looking at business use, um, so that's what we're going to recommend here, this was town hall, uh, it was this building inspector. And, uh, the only function we know for sure that the main level is going to be private office.
Mm-hmm.
So in that case, uh, fortunately, we're not required to provide the, uh.
Okay.
Public ADA access. Um, but yes, it's eventually, it's, it's a main issue, it's, you should have the AAB to decide eventually if somebody.
Do you have enough space in the back there to, do you have enough space in the back where you could convert parking to ADA if you needed to in the future if the use changed?
Well, that's such a, it's such a big issue that I think it needs to be, you know, decided with where it was moving in or changing the use of the building. So once it's becoming something else and somebody.
We'll see you again if that happens. Yeah.
Uh, there is a little sliver of property on the north side that could, you know, potentially become a ramp.
Mm-hmm.
If you need to be, uh. But, or elevator, elevator would fit there into the, that would be an easy solution.
Does that three foot eight privacy wall, does that exist currently or is that a proposal?
No, proposed.
That's proposed, so, okay, so that's just screening from a post office?
Well, the other way, it's a screening from the south side, so, uh, oh, yes, and there's a screening from the.
On the north side, yeah, okay, on the north side there, that's the one I was.
Yeah.
On the north side where those four trees are located?
That's right.
Okay. Um, Jeremy, any other questions? No?
I'm fine.
The improvement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going to run through?
Should we go through that?
Yeah, do you have them up?
My hands are close enough.
I thought I had them up, and I don't.
The, the board, just for the benefit, just to remind applicant board runs through their site plan review criteria to help them, help inform their decision and recommendations ZBIA. And then to understand if there's more materials, then we can develop some site plan for the whole later, just to make you get the ZBIA special thing. So, uh, we're going to go through.
Go for it.
Yeah, minimize the volume of cut and fill, number of removed trees, uh, area wetland vegetation displaced, extent of stormwater flow. Increase from the site, soil erosion, threat of air and water pollution, I don't think any of those. Maximize accessibility, uh, and pedestrian vehicle or safety both on the site and accessing, exiting the site. Um, I think they handled.
So there, there's no requirement for, um, for parking, right? And, um, they're improving accessibility from the streetscape by providing a path.
Yes.
To what is essentially a front door.
And there's plenty of, there's plenty of street light to get to the building at all.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
At night, so it's, it's really hard to provide that.
So number three is minimize the obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. Uh, it doesn't apply, um, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage and other outdoor service areas viewed in public ways. Uh, where premises residentially used or zoned.
What is, are there, what are they doing, what are the trash?
Oh, yeah, garbage?
I mean, I don't like producing garbage. Not there, I produce garbage in my apartment across the street, if I go over there, it's really not.
But you can have a kitchen. You have a kitchen.
Well, I mean.
But, so the root of our question is normally, do you need some sort of exterior enclosed space outside of the building for garbage? Or is it a small enough amount that you can manage an interior in a tote and you just gamble it with. You know, pick up by a, a vendor or taking it to the transfer station?
Yeah, I don't really produce any paper or anything like that, so it's just, uh, yeah, it's some, my garbage, I literally just take it with me and I drop it when I leave, so it's usually a small bag.
So you're not going to have a, a dumpster?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
We're worrying about bears.
True.
Yeah, you're right. Um, minimize glare from headlights, uh, minimize light glare into the night sky and minimize the overspill into adjacent properties.
Uh, the lighting is, had no concerns with.
Uh, minimize, uh, unreasonable departure from the character, materials and scaled buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and places. Well, it is a building, so. So it's, I don't think the scale is an issue. Anybody?
No, and I think they're integrating it into the streetscape with both the landscape and the, um, the wall construction.
Yeah, I really like that.
And it's subtle.
Getting better.
Um, minimize contamination of groundwater from on-site wastewater disposal systems or operations on the premises involving the use, storage, handling or containment of hazardous substances.
Is that applicable?
Uh, no.
Okay, none of.
And ensure compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw, including parking and landscaping, which is what we discussed.
Okay.
Besides, we have comments.
Yeah, so just in terms of recap, um, should we apply, throw out a more detailed site plan with specifics of landscaping? Um, I'll just throw it out since you do have such a huge front yard space. I think many years ago, there was a really big oak tree that grew in that space. I don't know if you'd consider a yard tree that might be able to grow into that space, but.
That's the big stuff that I'm.
That's the big stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's just an amazing opportunity for like a really amazing street tree.
Yeah.
Um. And I think that's it, so then the next thing we need to do is, uh, a motion for a positive recommendation to the ZBIA. For this application regarding the non-conformity and the associated changes to buildings.
A move.
Can we open up public comment?
Yeah, we asked, they told us about.
Yeah.
There's no. There's no coming.
Um, I have a motion and I have a second, thank you. Um, so any discussion? Any comments from people out there? Any comments from people in here? All right, uh, all in favor? Aye, any votes? Okay, great. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with the Z B As.
Thank you.
Yes. Same decision.
We're nicer than they are. All right, thanks guys. Okay, we have a couple more items. Just little people.
Yeah.
Um, so the next item on our agenda is the town planner's report. And Mr. Rumpel, you wanna take it away?
All I have for you tonight is I shared with you like the draft of the planning board's report in town meeting. Um, and uh after making, so there's three planning board recommended zoning articles at town meeting for May sixth. A board member will make the motion for each. Uh, and then once it's been seconded, the moderator will ask for the planning board's report on the article. And you'll read what's in the report here. So typically what you do is you assign a member to each of your zoning articles to make the motion and make the the report.
Mm hmm.
So.
Yeah. Pedro.
So we get to assign, we get to assign it to people that aren't here, right?
Uh, no, I'm not volunteering for anything. Don't be very nice for finding a typo. But you could ignore me if you'd like to do that.
There's a typo on the
Well, unless my grammar is way off. It's Article twenty-one under trees. This amendment is proposed in order to require that trees planted as required under the zoning bylaw be replaced if they die.
Oh, that's a fair comment.
It's very.
Yeah, the word two might be appropriate.
Yeah. It's subtle. And that's my knife, the word of the knife.
So you're allowing to?
Yeah. Oh. If that, if that's appropriate, I'd be glad to take that.
We'll give Pedro Article nineteen.
Okay. And so somebody needs to do Article twenty.
And by right housing, anybody want it?
Hello.
Malcolm will do Article twenty. Jackie will do Article twenty-one.
That's it. I'll just make sure you have the motions at the meeting and we'll fix that typo.
So we don't, we don't do a report on twenty-eight on the citizens, well, that's Thanks Malcolm. Yeah, I guess there is um the report is that there is no position.
Yeah, so who says that?
Who says that?
It falls on the chair.
I'll do that one. Yeah.
Okay, there's no motion.
Right. Yep.
Two pages, do nothing.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Um, okay. All right, moving on to trailers and mobile homes. Good evening.
Moving on.
Thank you.
Much.
Hi Fred.
Fred Park, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, three eighty-eight Park Street North. Uh, Mr. Joseph Mathis is here, also a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. This is his initiative. Uh, and.
Great. We would like to just learn more. So if you are uh able, uh, Mr. Methods, Joe Joseph, what do you prefer?
Uh, Joe was fine.
Joe, okay, great. Um, so yeah, so uh before we were going to take any action or consider, we just wanted to gather information. And so Fred had sent us the letter that um Affordable Housing Trust Fund put forward as well as the minutes of, I think it was two meetings, one meeting, Karen.
I sent you one, meanings of one minute from March nineteen.
Yeah. Minutes of one meeting from March nineteen. And so it's we have received those, uh, and so we've had a chance to read through those.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you wanna give us a little more context, that'd be great.
Okay, um, so yeah, so the Affordable Housing Trust Fund uh sent this letter. Um, the letter basically says, uh, I'm not gonna read the whole thing.
No.
But um, it says to the members of the Great Barrier Planning Board, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund requests that the planning board examine the necessity of an intention behind section eight point six of the zoning bylaw. This section reads, um, it uh as a temporary dwelling, one trailer, recreational vehicle, or mobile home may be permitted and used as a dwelling on any standard lot for not more than sixty days in any twelve month period. A permit from the building inspector is required. The special permit granting authority may however allow such use for a longer period of time by special permit in hardship cases provided that a time limit of twelve months imposed is part of the authorization. So um, let me switch names. Um. So um, actually, before I say anything else, I just wanna make super clear uh to, for the record and for anyone listening, um, that we are not talking about mobile home parks. This has nothing to do with mobile home parks. Um, so a lot of people hear mobile home, they think mobile home parks. Um, and uh, cause that's an arrangement where the homeowner or the the owner of the home doesn't own the land that it's on. Um, so we're, all we're talking about is this restriction that that doesn't talk about mobile home parks, just talks about mobile homes. Uh, and um, we're talking about whether somebody can cite a mobile home on their own land. Um, and we're, we're thinking of like, it could be an accessory dwelling use, you know, uh, usage. Um, so um, so the first thing I want, uh, and so then I wanna make clear that um the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, when we discussed it, um, so I raised it and I was saying, well, let's, let's go and just ask them to get rid of eight point six, eight point six point one. And the rest of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund said that's, that they didn't think it was really appropriate for the trust fund to be even like making a request like that. It's sort of like, it's not our, our role uh to be, to be sort of like asking for things like that. Uh, so instead, the letter was, was uh changed to be more like uh just asking the question. Like, so we're basically just asking the question about eight point six point one. Um, and so um, like, I have opinions, uh, but I'm trying, but I'll start to distinguish between I have an opinion and when uh, the, and the views of the A, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So um, as far as the trust fund is concerned, uh, it's this list of considerations uh in the letter. Uh, so I'll just read those now. It's, so it's these, these, these are considerations about the mobile home rule. So we're asking to take a look at this rule, uh, one, in light of the current housing crisis and the goal of creating housing through the addition of accessory dwelling units to existing lots. Uh, two, um, just that uh the rules permitting movable tiny houses, which are less than four hundred feet, uh, which have many characteristics with mobile homes more than five hundred feet. So just uh this sort of discrepancy that's very hard no on mobile homes. And then we, we allow by right, uh, movable tiny homes as A D U's. Um, number three, the apparent support in the bylaw for prefabricated modular homes, more than one piece, but not for mobile homes, one prefabricated piece. And I, I think in my research, um, I think that that's not totally a fair distinction because I think when it's a modular home in two pieces, it has to follow the building code. Uh, whereas the, as a single piece prefabricated follows the the Western code. Um, but uh still, it's the way that the the definition is, is laid out, it's not clear that if you have a, a modular home that was one piece that followed the home, the housing code, that it would qualify. Uh, that you could, that you could cite it. Um, so um, and then uh, okay, so sorry, um. So number four consideration, uh, we're asking you to review this, this rule, seeing is it, is it needed anymore? Um, so one thing that I had a lot of trouble with, um, and I honestly, I apologize, I didn't get the chance to go down to the library and look at all warrants. Um, so basically, uh, my understanding is the, the zoning bylaws got, got um sort of updated at, at some point, uh, as whole cloth. Um, and so it's really, it's kind of hard to see behind where these, the, the bylaws came from. Um, so people just say like, oh, this, this bylaw came, uh, this uh rule, eight point six came out in the eighties sometime. But I, I, I just haven't been able to find like the, the warrant that introduced that.
There's um, if you use a service called Ecode.
Hmm.
Um, I believe that it references when code modifications have gone through, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's tricky because I think, um, I think that it, they will tell you when, when something was, was
amended.
amended, but I think that there was a whole cloth adoption of a new bylaw. And so it's like hard to see beyond that event horizon. Um, so um, so I, I don't know why, why this was put into place. Um, so um. Yeah, so another thing that I just wanna say for the record, um, for anyone who's listening, uh, but I, I think probably you're all aware of this. Um, that the term mobile home, that the, the, this terminology is confusing. Um, so in the listing about uh mobile homes, um, they are talking about or in the um, in the rule, it's talking about RVs, talking about uh as a temporary dwelling, one trailer, recreational vehicle or mobile home, uh, and has these rules. And then we have a separate definition of a mobile. Uh, so I just wanna make clear that we're not talking about recreational vehicles. So we're not talking about anything that has a motor attached to it, you know, um, and uh, so um, the, when you see the term mobile home, uh, it encompasses, uh, it can encompass things that are on wheels. But the mobile homes that we're really talking about, I think the, the, the industry, they would prefer to say pre, pre, prefab home or a fabricated home, or ma- manufactured home, sorry. Um, and that these are usually not on wheels and that the mo- the mobile quality of it is that it was transported to a home site. So when I say trailer home, trailer home means that uh, it was transported on a trailer. Um, and so um, it's just that is really confusing. And so sometimes you'll have um double wide trailer homes, but they're not really, they're not like something that you can pick up and move around all the time. Uh, like, once you place it, you're probably not gonna move it again. Uh, so it's, it's just a very confusing thing about this. Um. So, um, yeah, so, so, um, sorry, so the, the digression about the um, about like where this rule came from is that I don't know why they put it in here. So we, I kind of had to speculate. Um, and, or we kind of speculated in the letter. So number four consideration is just um, you know, it wasn't because in the eighties, uh, trailer homes were viewed as very shoddy made. Um, and there was, uh, my understanding from my research is that the, the standard code that in nineteen seventy-six, they adopted a, a, an ANSI standard. And that, and the trailers built after nineteen seventy-six, or mobile homes built after nineteen seventy-six are uh, just like a better following. Um, so that's like one idea. It's like maybe that's the reason why this rule was placed, put in place. Um, and so I just, number five, uh, and you know, we just don't know the motivations, but um, is it possible that the, the rule was put in place for, out of associate economic bias? Um, so basically, um, uh, I don't know, but, but uh based on a perception, but based on one, maybe a conflation of just mobile homes in general and mobile home parks, um, and the perception that uh, that those are inhabited by, by poor people and people were concerned about whatever bias involved with that. Um, and uh, I, I've also heard, um, people say that, that they think that there's sort of a mechanical thing where uh a, a trailer home, a mobile home in your, in your neighborhood will, will reduce your property value because um, because sometimes it's not considered to be a real property, uh, that if, that it, just like legally, it's a uh, personal property. Um, and researching it in Massachusetts, it looks like if you, you take the mobile home and you just cite it on a foundation that that is permanent, you can classify it as, as real property and that, that sort of consideration goes away. Um, so let's see, um. Okay, so a- as far as the, the Affordable Housing Trust's uh interest, uh, we want to promote accessory dwelling units and we have this category of movable tiny houses uh at the low end, uh, and low end is fifty thousand, eighty thousand dollars. Um, when we're promoting uh movable tiny ho- homes, however, those are not appropriate for a lot of families. They're, they're basically only really appropriate for like one or two people. Um, and then with our A D U efforts, we're trying to um, look at other renovations. Uh, and those are very expensive because of construction costs. So there being a middle space uh between movable tiny home, which is kind of like a niche uh thing, uh, and um someone doing a full conversion on their garage or, you know, whatever. Um, uh, movable, uh, uh. Mobile homes would be, would fit in nicely if those could also be A D U's. Um, and when I'm saying that, I'm kind of like, I'm, that's my editorialization now. Um, so, but that's why we want you to, to look into this issue, whether it's necessary. Um, I think the sort of last, um, okay, so I'll say, and I will say, um, that I had been thinking about this issue before. Um, but something that sort of inspired me to bring it to the trust fund was that, um, I was getting a taxi from Bradley Airport. And I had a long conversation with a guy from uh Millerton who, whose daughter was able to buy a hu- house for eighty thousand dollars. And he said that, he said that it was the only way that she could afford to live in Millerton. Um, so I, in my mind, a sort of ideal use case or like one possible use case would be people who, they want their kids to stay in the, in the area and they can't afford to purchase. And so the parents could, could just cite a mobile home on, on like a big backyard. Uh, so, um. So the last thing I want to say and then I've done is just, um, I just wanted to walk through. So this table of use regulations, um, it says that, uh, that mobile homes are permitted, or you know, they're part, is it called special permit, uh, from select board uh, in various zones and it's not permitted in other, but then it says see also eight point six. So then you go to eight point six and it basically says only in emergencies, basically, o- only in special circumstances. So it's this hard no. Um, and then the final thing is just uh looking at the definition, um. And, yeah, and, and it has these different contradictions in it, um, that we're allowing movable tiny homes at less than four hundred feet. And the movable tiny ones, as I understand it, they follow A one one nine point five. And that's just sort of a, that's like a, I don't know, it's not less stringent, but it's just like applies to things with wheels. I think recreational vehicles, whereas A one one nine point one applies to uh manufactured homes.
Uh, Joe, I think I correct you.
Yeah.
There is a special definition for manufactured homes.
True.
And they follow HUD regulations, which the base, I mean, I'm putting on my other hat. Because Pedro's not here to observe.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm just observing this, but our two architects are not here tonight. And they're, this is so, the kind of discussion we have is like, what are they actually, what codes they apply? Is it apples to apples? Is it apples to pears?
But there is a separate definition for manufactured homes that is different from mobile homes. And it has to do with following a different standard.
Sure.
The essence basically is uh energy efficiency. A manufactured home will have to meet our stretch code. A mobile home, because it follows the ANSI standard, is more like an RV.
Is that?
Manufactured homes aren't mobile homes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's.
And so I think that's something we'll drill into, we'll get into.
Yeah, it is super complicated.
But I, I, I would just like to say, I mean, you're you're right on. I mean, it seems absurd to have a, a bylaw that prohibits. I mean, that's essentially what the mobile home bylaw does is it prohibits mobile homes except in emergency. And it's curious that the mobile home definition is one of the longest definitions. And it's curious that, uh, the mobile home definition is one of the longest definitions we have, but it's for something with prohibitive.
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, I, 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 I think you're right, it just makes a lot of sense, I mean, we're allowing tiny homes, uh. Uh, you know, uh, which had to be, uh, you know, permanently placed, have to be hooked up to water and sewer, um.
We, and we did amend that for movable tiny homes too, so, um, so, I mean, we are. Always looking at dealing with inconsistencies, I, I frankly don't know what the genesis was of this and I'm not. Really gonna do an archaeological excavation on it if you want to go for it, but. You know, I think we look at it in terms of the context that we have now and the housing issues we have now. I, I am curious though, Fred or Joe, with, through your research, like. When we take these changes to town meeting, there's always a lot of questions, so we have to do some community education ahead of time, but like. I haven't honestly seen a new mobile home, my sister used to live in one, you know, fifteen years ago. Um, so I saw that one, but, um, I, I don't have a sense of like, what is the, the current standard for them to. Do you?
I, I think when Joe originally brought this to our board. Um. He pointed out the arbitrariness of the tiny home definition. Going up to or, uh, four hundred square feet and mobile homes starting at five hundred square feet. And it seemed like the four hundred square foot limit was the most restricted. One possible direction this could go would be to again examine the tiny home. If, if indeed there's very little difference between a mobile home and a tiny home, other than. The line that says this is this many square feet and this is more than this many square feet, maybe that's the fluid. Portion that could be, you know, expanded like a bubble to, to incorporate one more bedroom, incorporate one more. At the end of the day, you know, construction costs are so expensive that people are intending to build much, much smaller. But, you know, four hundred square feet.
Well, but, but, I mean, to Joe's point, the tiny home is not meant for a family, right, you know? And that was brought to us by someone with an interest in tiny homes and wanting to see how they could. Help alleviate sort of the mother-in-law apartment issue, so, you know, I think our. The approach we're trying to take is like. Hear all the ideas and then let's figure out what kind of additional tools we can put in the toolbox.
I, I do agree that the term mobile home can be. Pretty toxic when, uh, it doesn't, isn't accompanied with education. And isn't accompanied with, uh, updated, uh, standards and, and, and understanding. Because of either the socio- socioeconomic bias or the quality standards or the.
It's, it's the image of the mobile home, I mean, you know, versus a tiny home, tiny home is something, it's attractive, you know, it's. But a mobile home is this metal box.
Except when you go to like the well-kept mobile home parks, like they're really nice, you know?
I don't want to be the one person to go to town meeting and say, let's put mobile homes.
Yeah, but never one.
Well, thank you for raising this issue. In, in terms of Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um. Is this, are you guys exploring mobile homes more broadly as a tool in your toolbox?
We're talk, we're talking about, uh, a lot of, uh, prefabs. Like modular people.
We kind of move a little slow in, in, in some people's minds, um. You, you may recall that the Planning Board, after, uh, adopting ADU regulations. As part of the, uh, conclusion of that process, sent the Affordable Housing Trust a letter saying. Hey, guys, we've, we've led the table, we've, uh, we've put this enabling law in. But perhaps implementation, and, and so the, the kind of idea was that the Planning Board. Created the groundwork, but it needed to pass it on to another board, in this case, the Affordable Housing Trust. For implementation. So, we took that under advisement, we've been working on it for two years. And we are about to roll out, uh, an ADU incentive program based upon your board's. Uh, input and, uh, uh, regulations. So, the whole idea of a pilot project is to get one or two of these built.
Mm-hmm.
Figure out what's successful about it, what are the issues with it? Pull it together, take lots of pictures, write lots of articles about it, talk about it broadly. And hopefully that can, uh. Bring it out to the, the greater community who may not be aware. Use it as an education tool as well as a, as a pilot project.
Yeah, what I'd like to see is see something, I mean, we're talking about all these different modes of mobile home. And I want to see pictures and I want to see size, I want to see the floor plans, I want to see the price points. And, and mobile home in the way that you're describing and we can envision. One that we know of, I mean, I just think visualization here is really critical, because definitions are so confusing. And, I mean, while you're talking, I was thinking, well, what if I lived on my boat? I don't have a boat, but I mean, what if, you know? Because I, I live in Miami, I live in LA, I live near the ocean and people lived on their boats and they might be in the yard, you know, so. I went that far, so, you know, houseboats.
Now, we have three rivers, you know?
But it's, it's a chance to get creative and excited about it and frankly, I'd like to have two tiny homes and. On one lot with a breezeway, and he can live there and I can live there, you know?
Yes, the Affordable Housing Trust is working on a. It's working on an incentive, incentive program to, uh, help mobile, help, yeah, strike that. Uh, encourage ADUs, you know?
Is the state backing that at all? I just heard New York is gonna offer an incentive program that's actually pretty generous.
I have not heard of a program like that.
Maybe, maybe we send Haley Pocals, uh.
There's a comprehensive housing bill that's, that's going underway right now, an ADUs are a big part of that, I really try to figure out what.
So, New York is.
Bond, it's stuck in the bond issue.
Yeah, but, oh, these things have a way of pumping out.
Yes, it's, it's moving.
New York is giving people a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards construction of an ADU if you. Restrict it for ten years for affordability and.
And how are they funding, are they broadly funding it?
They are, yeah, I think they block grants. So, I don't know, I don't know if it'll make people, I mean, when you think of the square footage, you know, per square footage cost, but. It's like, wow, maybe that'll spur something.
So, a- am I hearing that, um, that the Planning Board would be interested in like a splash or presentation?
No, you don't have to do a splash here presentation, uh, this is great, this, well, I, you know, we want to fold in our, our architects. Cause they have a lot of, um, back knowledge on this, but thank you for giving us your perspective and, and letting us know where you're at with it.
So, just like one last point, I, I'm not totally sure about this, but, uh, I think that Great Barrington is kind of an outlier in how restrictive they are. Towards, uh, mobile homes, like maybe not, um, but I, I think me and Stockbridge, that they actually allow them.
It would be interesting to know what, um, you know, what the bylaws are like, you can look that up.
And, and Williamstown, Williamstown adjusted their bylaws to allow mobile homes, like for the sort, the sort of social justice reasons.
Okay, cool, thank you so much. All right, uh, board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns, Jeremy.
Uh, nothing except we have a, uh, C C meeting coming up, um, next week.
Okay. Uh, Jackie?
I'm fine.
Okay.
So I sent you guys, um, three documents today, you know, I'll take a look at, um. They have to do with, uh, legislation or proposals from the Haley administration. On, uh, issues that you may want to be aware of and know where that I, where it is, um. Uh, one is, uh, they, they want, there, there's a movement to codify site planning. Which is really positive, uh, um. Uh, you can look at that, the, uh, there's a, a proposal to establish seasonal communities. Uh, and the seasonal communities program gives housing, um, uh, the, uh, towns. Uh, would have the ability to make certain housing exemptions. Uh, based on the need for seasonal housing. And, uh, the towns of, uh, you know, on, on, uh, um, Cape Cod, they, they're automatically in it.
Mm-hmm.
Now, Cape Cod, Martha's Vineyard, and Mantucket are automatically in this, uh, thing if it ever gets passed the legislature.
No, Lee Davis is testifying on it.
All right.
Lee Davis is on the committee and she's testifying.
Yeah, well, we would have to opt in, uh, as a town, and it looks like we would qualify, so it's, it's something to keep an eye on. Uh, because there's somehow, there are definitely some housing components there. And then the third thing is, uh, there's a commission on energy infrastructure citing. Uh, and, uh, the proposal that's coming out of the state now. It will basically eliminate local involvement at all in citing large systems. And would mandate, um, uh, local governments to streamline the, the permitting process for smaller. Under twenty-five megawatt, uh, systems. Uh, but would grant this, uh, state agency the, the right to, uh, review and. Uh, and, uh, and then basically throw out a local decision. So, it's not a.
Is that renewable?
Yeah.
Is it renewable energy systems?
Uh, it is any, uh, yeah, it is, uh, specifically renewable ener- yeah, it, they're, they're addressing. Renewable energy systems, but it is, has to do with the whole infrastructure, including transmission, uh, facilities, uh, um. Uh, the, uh, storage, or they address battery storage and all that.
Yeah, that's, I don't know if that's.
Uh, you know, the idea, uh, to me is, 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 is positive in the sense of. You know, let's all get behind, you know, this, uh, energy transmission that's going on. But if it, uh, if it gets rid of local, uh, uh, involvement in citing, then that's a. It's not a good.
So we should read that one.
Yeah, and, and the R T C is on top of it.
We've been pretty active about approving, um, renewable energy facilities where some communities have it and I think that's a good thing. You know, we're trying to produce the energy we're using here at Great Barrington.
But the, uh, the other thing is, um, uh, we're trying to encourage them to, um, favor. Uh, canopies and using ground fields for citing as opposed to using greenfields for citing.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it's very, very easy to put huge solar arrays all over Berkshire County because there's a lot of open land and, uh. Uh, and, uh, you know, the fear is that, uh, the, uh.
Where's the food go?
The people in the committees will, uh, you know, look at Boston and look at Fergers and say, okay, they got it.
Yeah, so we produce all the energy for Boston.
You know, that's, that's, that's.
Pretty complicated for transmission and all of that stuff.
But, that's the fear.
Okay, thank you for sharing that, that was really helpful.
I guess we have to meet our.
That we have a lot of open space for transmission.
Um, needs to go corridors, um, so just in terms of, um, things on my plate. Um, the only thing I was gonna ask Chris, actually. Is in, in terms of our review of lighting items, um, I've had a couple of people mention to me and. I think Pedro's also had a couple of people mention to him, it looks like there's some turnover of the street lighting in town. To maybe LEDs? Do, can we get more information, is it, is the town turning that over, is it National Grid turning that over? Uh, do we have any input into the color, temperature of the light that's going in? Can people call someone if they need shielding on the new lights?
Uh, I'll get you some information.
That'd be great, thank you. Okay, anything else? All right, then we will adjourn. Oh, citizens speak, sorry.
I just wanted to make a, a, five, three eighty, I just wanted to make a note about the nine Elm Court, uh, parcel. That, uh, you discussed earlier, to say that the sidewalk is only a very small sliver of the actual parcel. And that the, uh. Development for the DuBois Center is spending a significant amount of money. Uh, and, and work, uh, to pull that all together and really needs that sliver of land, so just. I know it's easy to focus on the sidewalk, but that's only a very small area, the total parcel there. And because they are spending such a significant amount of money, it does make sense to make it permanent for them.
Thank you. Uh, anybody online? Citizens speak.
Audrey's going.
Uh, okay, hearing none, then we'll adjourn at eight o'clock.
Thank you.